There it is. Good evening. We'd like to call this joint meeting of finance and construction committees to begin at this time. And for the beginning, we'd like to ask Mr. Randy Lawson, Chairman of the Construction Committee, to lead us in a word of prayer.
Let us pray. Dear gracious, kind heavenly Father, thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to come out and discuss the issues with Public Schools of Robinson County. Dear heavenly Father, just put a hedge protection around all our students and teachers. Dear heavenly Father, the ones here at the central office, dear heavenly Father, we just asked you to lift them up, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, as we discuss business for the public schools of Robinson County, just help us to move wisely, dear heavenly Father, and do the things in accordance to your will. We ask this in Jesus Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Ms. Brenda is listening by phone. I don't think we have anyone else that I'm aware of that's listening that way. Board members present, got Mr. Dwayne Smith, Mr. Terry Locklear, John Simmons, Chairman Mike Smith, and Mr. Randy Lawson, and Mr. Henry Broer, and myself. And what we'll do is just go through the agenda, and anyone has questions or things we need to look at, we will do that. First item here is an update on FEMA, and that's Mr. Hugh McIlwain.
Good evening. At the last board meeting, the board voted to go ahead and withdraw our appeal with FEMA and then enter into arbitration. As of yesterday afternoon, all the paperwork was submitted to the CBCA, which is the Civilian Board of Contract Appeals, which will be, who will be here in our case. They have acknowledged receipt of, have already provided a docket number, and within the next 14 days, we should be hearing from them when we will have a telephone conversation to conference to get everything scheduled for the hearing, pre-trial and all that. North Carolina Emergency Management is also in receipt of our withdrawal letter, so everything is as it should be right now.
Any questions?
I don't.
Dr. Williamson.
Hugh, remind us, please, this whole process was an accelerated process, and we hope it will be completed. What's the timeline? Do you have any idea?
As of today, 120 days at most, from today, start to finish.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. The K-12 athletic grant for my high school, Mr. Jerome Hunt.
Good evening. So recently, DPI sent out an athletic grant to all the high schools in North Carolina, not the high schools, but the districts, to be used for athletic facilities, to upgrade athletic facilities. Our part of that was $146,000, and it was based on the ADM at the high schools. And we decided to use that money at Fairmont High School to upgrade some of their athletic facilities. And talking to Mr. Prater, what we want to do with it is replace a storage building that they keep all of their football equipment in, their lawn equipment that they work on the fields with. Right now, they've got the old Quonza hut that sits out beyond centerfield of the baseball field. I know if you've been there, you know the old Quonza hut. And the Quonza hut leaks, and all the equipment gets wet every time it rains. So we want to replace that storage building. We want to repair the softball dugouts, take the tin from around them, and we want to make those cinder block, replace the field goal posts that are there. They still have the original, the original H field goal posts. It's been there as long as the field's been there. And use the rest of it to try to renovate the football press box. Currently, the football press box does not have any air conditioning in it, no heat, and hopefully, we can add on just a little bit to provide a little more space for them. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Craig, with Mr. Jerome, would they have to do a bidding process for it, or we're going to do this in-house?
I'm not.
Can you hear me?
Can you answer that, Ms. Erica?
May I answer that?
Go right ahead.
Ms. Fairby, at this point, we haven't gotten started on those projects. It may be where we can piggyback on other projects because the total dollar price point does not meet the criteria necessary for a full bid. It sits at $147,000, but we will look at that and see. But some of the project types, we've already had work done. It may be that we just get some quotes so we remain competitive, but it wouldn't require a formal bid.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Craig, with Mr. Jerome, would they have to do a bidding process for it, or we're going to do this in-house?
Good evening. So recently, DPI sent out an athletic grant to all the high schools in North Carolina, not the high schools, but the districts, to be used for athletic facilities, to upgrade athletic facilities. Our part of that was $146,000, and it was based on the ADM at the high schools. And we decided to use that money at Fairmont High School to upgrade some of their athletic facilities. And talking to Mr. Prater, what we want to do with it is replace a storage building that they keep all of their football equipment in, their lawn equipment that they work on the fields with. Right now, they've got the old Quonza hut that sits out beyond centerfield of the baseball field. I know if you've been there, you know the old Quonza hut. And the Quonza hut leaks, and all the equipment gets wet every time it rains. So we want to replace that storage building. We want to repair the softball dugouts, take the tin from around them, and we want to make those cinder block, replace the field goal posts that are there. They still have the original, the original H field goal posts. It's been there as long as the field's been there. And use the rest of it to try to renovate the football press box. Currently, the football press box does not have any air conditioning in it, no heat, and hopefully, we can add on just a little bit to provide a little more space for them. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Craig, with Mr. Jerome, would they have to do a bidding process for it, or we're going to do this in-house?
I'm not.
Can you hear me?
Can you answer that, Ms. Erica?
May I answer that? Ms. Fairby, at this point, we haven't gotten started on those projects. It may be where we can piggyback on other projects because the total dollar price point does not meet the criteria necessary for a full bid. It sits at $147,000, but we will look at that and see. But some of the project types, we've already had work done. It may be that we just get some quotes so we remain competitive, but it wouldn't require a formal bid.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone else concerning that topic?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next is 2022-23 proposed capital outlay projects.
Good evening. So we met along with Mr. Ernie, Ms. Erica, myself, and Mr. Jerome, and we kind of laid out some proposed projects for the 22-23 school year. And all of these costs here are estimated. As you know, at any point in time, these prices could go up or go down. So I'll just run through these projects that we've talked about that we would like to complete for the 22-23 school year. First, if you've ever driven by Long Branch and seen the parking there, you know, teachers kind of park everywhere. So we've kind of walked that property and see the need for a parking lot there. We've estimated that cost at $250,000 because it's comparable to one we completed this past school year. We have in our funds $75,000 plus to complete parking at IEA, and our intent is to piggyback off of the university's project to expand their parking there. Mr. Jerome has checked into updating the lighting at all of our gyms at the high school level, and we're estimating that cost to be approximately $25,000 to get those updated, the LEDs. And this is something we've talked about the last couple of years. But to go ahead and completely redo the tennis courts at both Red Springs High and Purnell Sweat, the costs we have here, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Jerome, were two years old. So we know these costs here are going to be inflated, but I just wanted to share with you what the price was from two years ago. The bleachers at Lummerton Senior, Ms. Ernie, if I'm not mistaken, are the original bleachers that are there. And so we are looking to replace the bleachers in the gym at Lummerton Senior, and we have a quote of $340,000. The other three projects are roof-related. The roof at Lummerton Junior, we're estimating that cost at $90,000, and we do have, that's the most recent one, within the last six months. We have work that needs to be done at Pembroke Middle in terms of the cafeteria and gymnasium. We're estimating that cost at approximately $20,000. We have several roofs that need repairing over at Pine Grove, and Mr. Ernie and his crew walked that today, and we're estimating that cost at about $132,500. We have plumbing repairs that need to take place at Pine Grove. We're estimating that cost at $75,000. Also, we're looking at completing the Red Springs High Athletic Complex in terms of completing the football field in terms of sod and adding bleachers there, and we're estimating that cost at $800,000. We do have a quote on the bleachers, approximately two months old, and we're looking at $550,000 just for the bleachers there. In conversation with Mr. Hugh, one thing we would like to go ahead and have on as an annual piece of our capital outlay projects is to begin to replace our maintenance vehicles, looking at one to three a year, so we're not forced to a situation where we're doing multiple vehicles at one time. So again, we're estimating that cost, depending on the vehicles we will replace, at $200,000. And that brings our capital outlay projects for this year, as you can see, at $2,257,500.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Charlamagne, go ahead.
Ms. Brenda, let me get Dr. Williamson, then we'll get you.
Yes.
Erica, help me port a clarification. The IEA parking lot, $75,000, those funds we have in hand, and that may be 75-plus from my conversation the other day, correct?
That's correct. When the land was purchased by the university at IEA, they did pay you $75,000, and that's part of our existing fund balance.
If I may, Dr. Williamson, had a conversation with the, one of the gentlemen, Mr. Brown at the university. And just to kind of update, the parking lot they're using now in the back behind IEA, their intentions is to pave that parking lot and put up a permanent fence back there. And then that's when we were looking at trying to do the piggyback, that we could maybe work together on that, on our side of it. Because where that fence is at now, we'll have to move over about 20, I think, 20 to 25 feet, giving us more property. That will give us an area back there that we can park vehicles on. And the paving might not include all of that. It was basically to get around the building and in the front and then in the back, actual parking. If we had to, it was to look at doing what we have here, a gravel parking lot. But the 75 would be able, allow us to do something up there and fill in some places there that needs to be filled in. But again, we're trying to wait to see what the university and when they're going to get to their particular projects there.
Yes, sir.
So based on that conversation, Erica, again, we said 75-plus because our hope would be to pave it, all of that.
All of it?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And if I may add to that, too, we would also include the shining stars part of that paving as well.
Any other questions on that? Mr. John Simmons?
Question about the bleachers at Red Springs. You said 550 to 800, is that already included in budget that we already spent, or this extra money here?
This would be, this would be extra money. This is not part of the current project that they're working on at this point.
Ms. Erica?
I was just going to mention the concept behind the athletic complex at Red Springs High was always designed to be in phases, because we would have to do it over multiple years. Excuse me, because in one given year, we wouldn't be able to afford to do all of that. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bobby, that also gives an estimate for a press box?
Yes.
Yes.
And so the $550,000 is for the bleachers. The remaining would be the sod for the football field and the press box.
And goalposts.
And goalposts.
But that is an estimate, and that part of the project will be put out for bid.
Dr. Williamson?
Jerome, for clarification, the football field has been graded. So all that's in place, drainage is there, water connection is all in place with the existing project. So again, it's the bleachers and the sod that we're having the conversation about, correct?
He didn't turn his mic on.
But yes, sir, as far as the football field now, it's already graded the specifications. The water line has already been ran out there and capped off on the football field for the sprinkler system. So basically, you're just looking at sod, goalposts, and bleachers. And of course, the press box to go along with that. But the field itself is, yeah, it's graded and ready to go.
Mr. Bobby, let me ask, we've got $800,000 here, and you mentioned the sod. Is this including the sod, the bleachers and everything? This $800,000 is just everything?
Yes, sir, that's our estimate.
That's it, everything, okay. And my next question is, I guess this might be Ms. Erica. With all of these items, if we take all of these, we have money in place to take care of everything this year, next year as a capital project?
Yes, sir.
Okay? And that would not interfere with anything that we didn't get to do that's on the next page that we're pushing back to next year. We could still complete those. There's a couple of items on the next page that we didn't do this year.
That's correct. That we have enough funding to cover the 2.2 shown here, as well as the projects that Mr. Bobby will go over that have already been approved, but have not been expended yet. That's correct.
Okay. Dr. Williamson?
And Erica, again, as we had the conversation, to complete these projects would not take us below our fund balance and that, what we write.
That's correct. As long as these estimates don't exceed around a 10% or 15% window around those totals. If that's the case, then it would dip us lower than $5 million, but we'd still have the $5 million there. So I gave like a 10% to 15% contingency for the estimates because we recognize that some of these totals may change.
Mr. Dwayne and Mr. Henry?
So when would we be looking at starting on these right here? Would that be after it's been approved by the board? Or help me out with that, Ms. Erica, or somebody?
If I may, sir. It is our intent with your approval tonight to move this list to an action item so we can, on for the 10th, and then we'll start the process.
Okay.
And it would not start till the new fiscal year.
I was going to say, if Dr. Williamson wants me to answer, it would be as of July 1, yes.
Okay, so it would start like after this school year, then? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, one more question. Do we have, this is pretty unusual here, do we have any extra money, Ms. Erica? Let me just say this right here. I know, Mr. Hunt, I think you've been out and looked. Looked at senior high school, their tennis courts are in dire straits, too. So I just throwing it out there. I didn't know. Just food for thought. Because I know where we're at, we're looking at needs and wants right here, and, you know, just kind of.
Yeah, so, yeah, two years ago, Robbie Locklear from Bell, Ellen, Jay, he got prices to redo all of the tennis courts at the high schools. But he also done a, went around looking at all the tennis courts and looked to see which ones were in the worst shape. And Red Springs and Sweat were obviously in the worst shape. Red Springs played all of their games away this year. Sweat played at South Robinson and UNCP. So their courts weren't playable. Looking at Lummerton, yeah, they can get through one more year. They don't have the huge cracks in them like the other ones. But it is something that is a need.
Well, just, let's just invest in a weed eater to try to help them.
Okay, I think I had Mr. Henry, because while I go, then we'll get your mic. Ms. Henry?
I was going to comment that I think, you know, as we've discussed, we're going to look at that rotation cycle. Again, we've got to budget in different years because we only get funding for a certain number of things in any fiscal year. So we could put the tennis courts back on that rotation. And I feel weird not looking at you talking, but we could put the tennis courts on that rotation again to where we could pick up one a year like we've had those conversations. But.
Let me add to that, and then, Mr. Mike, I'll get you. I think to go, something we talked about maybe a couple of years ago, with these tennis courts, tracks, and if it's bleachers, that if we could get around and get every school, try to get every school, then go down in date when it was done and then start that rotation. So we get to this point that, okay, we're getting a track this year because we know we can't do three tracks in one year, if that makes sense. And there is a paper, and I've seen it, I got it at home when they did tennis courts, Mr. Smith, it's a couple of years old. And I remember Sweat and Red Springs was the top two, and then it went down from there. Tracks was in the same category as far as whatever. I'm not saying Sweat and Red Springs, but they were in the same category of needing work at each place. And I will verify Sweat has not played at home in two years, and Red Springs is worse, if not the same par. I mean, you got cracks on those courts that if a ball hits it, I don't know where it's going. Not saying Lummerton don't have it, but I've seen that there. Let me add, well, let me get the other questions, and then I have one I need to ask. Mr. Henry, we'll get you taken care of. You have something else? You good?
Yeah, my question was, once we put this in place with the Red Springs High Athletic Field, how much more are we expecting to complete the total process? Do you have any idea?
This would be it, wouldn't it? This would be it.
This would be our final phase?
Yes.
Complete us?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. Mr. Terry, did you have a question?
So for these types of projects, do we typically get warranties or maintenance agreements for how long this is going to last? Because, you know, with Mr. Craig talking about doing a rotation cycle, I think that's, you know, it makes plenty of sense. If we can sort of, you know, work the warranty information and all of that, is that something, like for everything that's listed here, would we get some sort of warranty? Or is there like a maintenance agreement that's typical with any of these items listed here? Just talk to me a little bit about that process and how it works.
Mr. Terry, while they are talking, there are warranty agreements put in, bleachers, or I know we think we missed a ball on something with some tracks, but there were bleachers and paving, roofs and stuff. There would be various warranty agreements that would be put in place. I can't tell you how long, and I think all of them, depending on what it is, would probably be a little different.
Most of them, very generally speaking, it's typically a year after completion. Does that sound right, Mr. Jerome, a year in most cases for warranties?
Yeah, as far as the warranty goes, yeah, most of them are a year. But now, when you get on your tracks, some of your tracks are going to be three years, five years, even seven years. Now, as far as the complex at Red Springs, before the construction company gets their final check, we'll have something in writing, we'll have a warranty on everything at that complex before they get that final check. So we're going to make sure we get warranties on it.
Ms. Smith?
Can you repeat that question?
The tennis, the tennis courts at Red Springs High School are probably the worst in the county. But at one time, we had an understanding with the city of the town of Red Springs. A lot of people don't know that, when they built the tennis courts, there's three, there's three tennis courts. At one time, when tennis used to be a pretty popular sport, we had some funding from the town that covered some of those expenditures. And I don't know if you talked to anybody from the town, but are we planning on funding that whole thing? Or are we going to ask the city to kick in some expenditures? Or are we just funding the whole bill?
I mean, as far as I know, we're planning on funding it ourselves. I know, I think the last time Lummerton's courts were done, I want to say the city of Lummerton may have kicked in some there. That's been years ago. And I actually got an email a while back about the city of Lummerton wanting to help renovate those tennis courts because they use them. The city of Lummerton uses those tennis courts quite a bit. I mean, that's something we can look into.
I think it's worth exploring. I mean, you know, for any, city of Lummerton and for the town of Red Springs, I mean, anybody that can help with some of the expenditures, I think is great. They use them, the public uses them, whoever uses them.
Mr. Terry?
So for example, I'm looking at these tennis courts again. Are there certain grades or levels of quality in terms of the surface? Can you, is there like a mid-grade or low-grade or high-grade? Or if so, what are we looking at?
I mean, I'm not expert on tennis courts, but yeah, I'm sure there is, just like anything else. But now the tennis courts at Sweat and Red Springs, everything's going to have to come up. Asphalt there, they just got to be completely redone. Some tennis courts with just minor cracks, they can come in and resurface and peel the cracks. But at some point, those same cracks keep coming back and keep coming back.
I was just thinking, I was just thinking in terms of like, I don't know what kind of surfaces they could be, like a rubber or asphalt or concrete. I mean, if we spend a little bit more, could you last a little bit, you know, make it last a little bit longer, you know, for getting the best bang for the buck in terms of longevity?
I'm sure there are different types of material that would last longer. And that's something we would have to talk to the companies about.
Let me ask, Ms. Erica, I guess this would be you. One time, we, I know we've done some roof repair at Lummerton Senior High, and there was issues with leaking there in the auditorium. Now, do we still have, is it an S or three, looking at that auditorium? Was that something that we were looking at doing later on as far as some, where they had had leaks and the PA system and everything? Is that something on something later on that we would see? Or do you know at this time?
The auditorium where there's no gym facilities and no bleachers is part of S or three.
Okay.
So it's coming later, yes. We're trying to finish the major products because we're doing them in order. S or one ends September of this year, two ends September of 2023, and then S or three, which the auditorium is in, ends in September of 2024. So we're trying to prioritize based on end dates of those grants.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Randy?
And Mr. Bobby, we had talked Long Branch. Is that the back parking lot that we're talking about?
We have, we have gone out and walked that. So we are looking at doing something in the back. You know, it's just an odd configuration there.
Right.
So do something in the back, also on the side of the cafeteria, where the dumpster's at. And going ahead and doing something in the front and depending on availability and funds. Uh, the pre-K that sits over behind the Woodman of the World Building.
Yeah.
If we have enough funds to being able to do something there.
Gotcha.
Now, the driveway that comes around the back of the playground, we would continue that as it is, but at a certain portion, we would begin to go there and, and pave that, but not the driveway, the entire driveway.
Okay. I'm good with.
Dr. Williams?
And then back to Mr. Locklear's point, we've had a conversation that we would not award any of these projects to a company that that was not their primary order business.
Let me, uh, ask the question, uh, Dr. Williamson, if it's you, I know we talked about, you know, voting on these items tonight and then bringing them up at the May tenth meeting. Now, the K-12 athletic grant, since that's up there, not in the box, is that a separate vote needed for that?
It, it is not. We already have those funds, so they will be awarded, so we don't need to take a vote.
You don't need a vote on that, on everything else on here. Do we need a vote for, for that? Okay. Uh, we have construction members here, and we have finance members here. Randy, I don't know which way to do it. We could do the construction or finance, or we do a combination vote of the two. And those that's in favor, and, and if you don't know, I always try to bring this on finances, Mr. Dwayne and Mr. Terry, and Mr. Devante, and Ms. Brenda is on the phone, and on, um, and myself. And on construction, Mr. Lawson, and, uh, Mr. Brewer, and Mr. Devante, Mr. Dwayne, and Ms. Brenda also. So, Mr. Wayne, you have a question?
Um, with me being on finance and construction, I'll be willing to make the motion on both sides to, um, I guess that we need to move it to an action item? Is that correct? Move this to an action item for our, to our.
To the board.
Recommendation to the board.
Recommendation to the next board meeting, would that be correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I second it.
Oh, wait, let, Mr. Wayne go ahead and, I, I want Mr. Wayne go ahead and get all that out.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this, Mr. Craig. On the next page, is, is that gonna be something separate right there with the carryover projects, or is that?
Those projects have already been approved.
Let's keep it separate, cause they've been approved.
Those have already been approved at previous board meetings.
Okay. All right. So, do y'all want to do, to do it separate, or do y'all wanna do it together? The finance and the construction to move it?
No, let's do it together.
Okay. All right. Make a motion to, um, move it to the board meeting amongst the rest of us to the May board meeting for approval.
Have a motion by Mr. Wayne, second by Ms. Brenda. Second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. That will be presented then at the, uh, May tenth board meeting. As a recommendation.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, we may need to wait and ask Mr. Grady. Could we lump this together, or would we need to go through each project and get approval? I don't know that.
Well, let me, I will say this much, this is a recommendation, and it is a recommendation now at a board meeting. That recommendation can be approved or denied.
Or amended.
Or amended, yeah, we can change it. So at that time, we could ask him, and if we have to go through individual, I'm just, I'm not saying I'm sure. But we could go through it individually if he says we need to. Dr. Williamson, that.
And share your thinking with Erica, because we've listed as capital projects, which all of this was filed under. So why would we take it separate? Go on.
The only reason I ask that is because we've had Mr. Grady say that in meetings before, that things need to be, um, like, I can't just do, I can't do a finance update, I have to list my sign-on bonus, I have to list my budget, I have to list everything separately. So I just didn't know if we could lump it in as capital projects and then just say approve or deny or amend. That, that probably sounds like it would work, but I just say that because he has said before, we have, I have to list most of the finance things separately.
Okay. Looking forward to that.
It's no problem. We can do it.
Any other questions? Okay, if we go to the second sheet, there are carryover projects there, and, um, I guess taking each one, Mr. Bobby?
All right, so just to follow up on some carryover projects from twenty-one, twenty-two. So last school year, we approved that the Fairmount High School track be taken care of. And we have, Mr. Jerome is getting in touch with the engineers to go ahead and begin that process immediately. Our other two projects that are gonna be considered carryover projects will be the St. Paul's and Purnell Sweat High School additional classroom spaces. We received our final contract from the engineer today to go ahead and begin that process that was signed off on. So we will, that process again has been signed off and is underway today. Also, we received our final paperwork for our Shining Stars, the Lumberton location. That was a project that was approved previous in the school year. That contract was awarded a cornerstone construction. The cost was eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We've received the final paperwork for that today. We've signed off on that, and that project will begin immediately as well. So the only one that we have not officially started and have paperwork going on would be our Fairmount High Tracks, and we're gonna get that started immediately.
Okay.
Any questions? Would those be the only real carryover projects we have from last year?
Yes, at this point, everything that was approved for the previous, from the previous school year, we've completed and/or have started. I think, Ms. Ernie, we've got one roof we've started, Prospect Gym, Prospect Roof, uh, Gym Roof has been started this week. But everything else we've completed.
And Mr. Bobby, one thing that, uh, I would like to say, and I know we get to the end of the year sometime in June or July for what's been done this year. But, uh, there's been tremendous amount of work done in this county on roofs. And lots of things, but not, not just, we didn't, we didn't patch them, they're being fixed. You go by schools and you see, I'm saying a new roof being put on. So at one of our meetings, I would like to see a list of all the schools that we've done roofwork to in the last two years. And that's one of those things that goes along with what I said before that we get a rotation of getting these things done, so we, we don't kinda drop one by the side, take it and take the money and go do something else, and then we never get back to doing what we should have done to start with. So I've been very happy in seeing that done, and, you know, I, I don't know if we've touched twenty or twenty-five schools with roofs in the last two years, at least probably something in that number. So if y'all can get us some of that at May meeting or June meeting, I think that would be good, just to let people know what's going on at school. That's one of those things that we know what's going on, but you really don't see it going on. Ms. Henry, do you have a question?
Oh, Mr. Bobby, I, I ditto on what Mr. Craig's saying with the roofs. And another thing that I think we, we, um, can all probably agree to is the fact that we have to keep our HVAC systems up even more with the, um, COVID situation we were in. If we can get a, a report too on where we stand with that, and, um, I like the ideal of, of, um, what Erica mentioned earlier, where we put projects on a rotating basis, so many schools, so that way it don't, doesn't dump a big burden cost on us at one time. I think that would be great if we put some kind of plan in place with the HVAC. Because whether it's hot or whether it's cold, we're gonna need HVAC.
And so Mr. Ernie did whisper in my ear, he already has the engineer working on the list of roof projects that we've completed over the last two years. And Mr. Brewer, just to add to the HVAC projects, you know, in S or, we've, uh, uh, wrote into S or two HVAC at some of our higher need schools. So we have thirteen schools that we're projecting to do, use S or two funds for, for HVAC. And in S or three, we have HVAC written in for our six, for our five high schools.
And Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby, that does include Lumberton Junior High in particular, right?
Lumberton.
They're on that list.
Yes, ma'am. Lumberton Junior High is number one on our list of thirteen schools that we are touching in S or two for HVAC.
Okay, great.
Dr. Williamson?
This is for Erica, Bobby, do top of your head, that total dollar amount coming out of S or?
If, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Williamson, the S or two was five million, and I believe S or three for the high schools was six point five.
I was thinking ten and six, but.
And that, and that may be, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, Needs-Based School Capital Fund, uh, Dr. Williamson?
Yes, thank you. At your site, you have a letter from Department of Public Instruction dated April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. As you are aware, we did submit, uh, a second application in terms of need-based funding. Our hope was that we would have been awarded, uh, thirty-five million on top of the fifteen existing that would have given us fifty million dollars. What we learned from the state is they awarded all projects at forty percent. So that means we received an additional twenty-five million dollars. So from, uh, DPI need-based grant, it's a total of forty million. We also have on hand the five million for the planetarium. Uh, you voted and approved out of our capital, um, fund, reserve fund, two and a half million. And then the county commissioners, two and a half million. So total dollars for the project at this point is fifty million dollars. Now, Erica, walk us through, um, they changed the application process. So while we're ten million less what we intended to have, we are no longer restricted to wait five years. We can turn around and submit another application, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And that is our intent. That is our intent.
And I believe, I'm sorry, but I believe you meant to say eighty percent instead of forty.
Yes, eight percent.
Eighty percent.
Forty million dollars plus, um, ten million for a total of fifty million.
Yes, sir.
Available to us now to start the project.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I sure have a great comment. This, it's very exciting for the public schools of Robbins County, Dr. Williamson. I'm looking forward to seeing some shovels they put in the ground and moving some dirt on this new.
Absolutely.
Planetarium and the other work, Career Technology Center.
That's awesome.
It, it is exciting.
Okay, Ms. Henry?
Does this mean that we'll go ahead and put it to a final completion vote to get started on this project at our next board meeting?
We will, um, the last part, the request for qualifications, we've gotta go through that process. And we'll talk about that in a minute, but we're gonna try to accelerate the process that we can break ground on, on this project. To do, so, yes. The next item is, uh, site selection for, uh, the new career center. What I shared with the board, board was that we would do the labor work in terms of both sites. We did ask Robbie, uh, to send us, and you have that at your site. Will the proposed building fit at both sites? And from documentation that you have, the answer is yes. Then we asked a question, the environmental's been done on both sites, uh, on the seven eleven site. And Mr. Ernie, you may want to speak to this, the environmental has been done, uh, the building's been done, and that property will per, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. And then Bobby helped us, we have signed off on for that work to be done at ComTech site, correct? Then, and so any consideration on that site will be contingent upon it maybe to per. So we share that information, that's why I said that as superintendent, with my responsibility to the board, and then to hand it off to you as board members for your decision and selection. But both sites at this point can, um, manage, uh, that building. Which chairman's?
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, this time, if we, um, if we're discussing, uh, which site, um.
That's the discussion right now.
I think that, and just my personal thinking, is that, um, we probably have more, more flexibility at ComTech. Um, I understand that the county commissioners have some property also that was, we could, um, look at trading out to give us direct, uh, exit and entrance to, uh, seven eleven. Um, my support would be Com, ComTech for the flexibility of, of what we can do in the future.
Mr. Terry?
I know we discussed a, a phase one and a phase two in a previous meeting. Is there one of the, one of these sites that's more, um, that would better accommodate the, the phase two portion? Or is, or, or both sites? You know, either way, we could, we've got, um, plenty of room to, to do what we want to do X number of years in the future. Because if you look at the trend, the newest school is, you know, it seems like we have to think thirty years down the road. So is, is it gonna matter which side as far as forecasting future?
Mr. Terry, I will answer that, what I know, anybody else wants to bring in. I think when we talked phase one and phase two, that was with the existing building. Other words, when the building was built, you're going in there and building everything that can be built at one time, and the phase two might be a second story on that building being completed. It's not necessarily moving over to another building. It would be all in one building, what I understand. It's not like, you know, going up, cause I know when we originally looked at this, I think it could be a two-story building. Now, I, I will say this on the two-story and on another building of phase two. If, if you will look, and then I'll open back up for whoever wants to, just for information purposes. The sheet that you have that was given, that's got the twenty-five thousand on the first page and then got what Robbie said. And then if you go to the third page there, just maybe for some clarification, if you look at that third page, that is the ComTech site. And if you see our building projected there with the, mostly in the blue, right in front of that looking, that's Highway seven eleven, to the left of that would be the Native Angels Building. And then, um, over to the right is, uh, the residential area there. You see where Board of Education, our land there is basically that wooded area. And what is a proposed swap is swapping our land for that land you see in the front, which is all clear and has got the road frontage. Now, again, and I would think we would want all this eventually in ro, writing. I have been told by the person that actually runs ComTech down there now, the director, which, you know, he's not gonna be there forever. But all that land back in that area, which is wooded area, there's a hundred acres back there. And they see no problem in us if we need to expand going back, because nobody's actually looking to go back there and do anything. So, you know, if we come in with other programs and need to go farther back there, there is more land there. But then actually building the site to start with, you're not gonna need the thirty-five acres that's there to start with. So there would be what we have out front plus possibility for expansion back there as far as that question being asked. And everything you see out front, there is, uh, road front.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Ms. Brenda?
As a former planner for the county, uh, when we were doing industrial park, it was, it was because all type of businesses could come into that particular area. And with us trying to do that technology center, it would automatically grant us to use that facility practically any way we wish if we do put it in the ComTech in that industrial area. So with me saying that, I, I think if somebody was saying we could sell this and sell that, by placing it there, we would be able to, um, facilitate such if we do put it in ComTech's area. So my, because of that, my view would be, and I'm just giving my planning side, okay? My view would be to put it in the ComTech industrial park. We got, we got that electrical plant that's on the other side, which could also have access for our students, environment and different things, you know, with different companies. I mean, it's just, it, we can facilitate a lot from it being there, in my opinion.
Ms. Brenda, um, my comments are, is that I've been approached and talked to by some of the county commissioners, and they're fixing to build an industrial park on seventy-four and ninety-five. And if you're wanting to showcase something like we're talking about doing, that might be where we're looking at going. I'm just putting my comments. I'm just putting my comments out there and their comments.
And you're correct. When, when we, when we rezoned that area, when we had an area rezoned where you're talking about, Mr. Randy, we had it for heavy industrial only.
Right. But on, on that same token, and I agree with you, the thing about it is, is that, I mean, people's traveling seventy four and ninety five. I mean, you've got, at Com Tech, you've got one way in on seven eleven and one way out. I mean, and that's what I, that's what they've approached me and talked to me about. And if there's land that can be traded, they may could do it out there. I don't know, but have we seen, my question is, have we had a cordial meeting with the county commissioners? I see Ms. Kelly Blue's name on here, but have we talked with the county commissioners about what our plans are? And if they would be willing to swap any land or anything like that? And my second part is, I know the land that we purchased on seven eleven, there at, um, Deep Branch Road, that mainly it was for in the future possibility of building central office.
Bus garage.
Bus garage, all of that. And we had, we had a list, but my thing is, is that, um, I think we need to have a conversation with the county commissioners and ask them what they're willing to put forth other than the two point five million dollars. If, if we're needing money and land to swap. We need to, we need to sit down with them and discuss this at some point in time. I understand what we're doing tonight is trying to find out which way we want to go, but, you know, you, you're looking at billions of dollars fixed to come to seventy four and ninety five. It's coming.
Mr. Terry.
My question would be what, what existing infrastructure is there at, at the site at seventy four and ninety five? I know at Com Tech, they have, um, internet, it's already been, you know, irrigated, they went out there and built the lake. There's been quite a, quite a lot of work over the years done as far as, um, grading all the, that property out there, uh, internet, electricity. Um, infrastructure is, as far as the streets are already existing, I mean, it, it looks, I mean, in my mind, it looks like a site, um, that's, that's ready to, you know, re, ready to go, uh, now. So I, I'm not aware of the, I'm not familiar with the location at seventy four and ninety five. So what, what, what is, is there now that we could sort of piggyback on?
I mean, that's what we'd have to do is look at.
Correctly. Yep. Correctly, it's rezoned for heavy industrial, heavy industrial could include heavy chemical. And it has not been rezoned since I retired, I know that from that, but it's, it's rezoned for heavy industry right now. So I'm looking at the chemical aspect of, of one versus the other versus businesses. That's all. And like Mr. Randy said, if the, if the board do wish to sit down with them, I'd be willing to sit down with them, Mr. Randy, you know?
Other comments?
Let me ask you this, on, on this right here where we're looking at, do we already own that? What's drawn on this paper, or would that be the county commissioners giving us that for this?
We own this.
Right.
It's a swap issue.
Right. Well, see, the thing about, and I'm just saying, when you say Com Tech, we, we don't own that land there. We're talking about having to swap with them anyway. So if we talking swap, why wouldn't we be swapping to put it some, if, if you're going to put a fifty, seventy five million dollar technology school and planetarium and stuff like that, why wouldn't you want it where? And I'm just saying, when you drive through Florence, South Carolina, and you see Q V C and, uh, I'm trying to think of the name, uh, All Purpose Foods and all of that, and look how it's grown over the last twenty years.
Uh huh.
I mean, and you're doing a career in technology school. I mean, you don't think some of those jobs would apply? I mean, and they could have, how much would they be willing to put into it? To help foot the bill? I mean, it's like Mike said while ago, we need to be using this to get all the monies we can and all the buy, all the people that needs to buy in to buy in that is. Because it's not just the public schools, we're talking about Robinson County, showcasing Robinson County. I mean, I'm just saying, first time we built anything in over thirty years, other than.
And it will be the showcase.
I don't, I don't have a problem, I, I will say this tonight. If, if that don't work and this, it's got to go somewhere. We, we, we're going to put it somewhere.
That's right.
Where is that? I, I don't know, because all of it's not laying on the table in front of me. Because what you're looking at on a picture right now, on, on this piece of paper, we don't even own that land. We're hoping that somehow the county commissioners, and they have said in the past, Mr. Craig, that I, I mean, I've heard that, exactly what you're talking about, is that they would be willing to swap. So, I mean.
I would tell that too, Mr. Randy.
Right. I mean, we've heard that over the years, Mike, Mike's been, he knows, he's been in some of those meetings that I haven't been in, but you come back and told us that they will be willing to do this. I just don't, I don't know what.
Hmm.
You know, and if, if you're going out there, is, it's worth, if you're looking at putting seventy five to a hundred million dollars out there, it's worth looking at. I, I mean, I wouldn't say go to Com Tech, because to me, Channing Jones would know, you know what I'm saying? Is, is he going to try to sell Com Tech over an industrial park? Or industrial park over Com Tech? I mean, I don't know, I don't, you know, but I do know that the investments and the things that are coming are at seventy four and ninety five, it's coming. Now, it might be thirty more years down the road or twenty five more years down the road, but I know that those things are coming. From what I, from what I've been told, so.
Let me make a couple of comments, Ms. Henry, and then something Mr. Terry said. Um, the infrastructure, uh, at Com Tech that exists now is county water is there, there is internet access there. Uh, with the buildings there, a lot of the infrastructure is in place. Uh, now, folks, you've heard me say this, you know, I think it needs to go at Com Tech. That's geographical center of the county. And, and I'm going to say, you know, I think it would have access, you know, for all our schools. And this is no disrespect, because, Mr. Randy, I've heard what you've said before. Uh, for me, this is being built for this county and for our schools. Uh, I don't have a concern who's traveling down seventy four and ninety five and seeing the building. Now, it might be a good selling point for the county, but that's just not a concern for me. The concern for me is what has already been established at Com Tech and what was set forth many years ago, that they wanted our system, UNCP and RCC to have facilities on that campus. And it's been twenty, twenty-five years, whatever it's been, and it's never happened. Uh, I think if this building is not built at Com Tech, I don't know that the public schools will ever put anything there. And the commissioners, I would say probably have final say so, but there's a board of directors that's at Com Tech. And that's basically who I've talked to that said they would give the approval to exchange the land that we own for that road furniture. That's who has given me that they would do that approval now, if they have to go with the commissioners, I'm not sure if I can find out. But they said it wouldn't be no problem switching. And also Mr. Fox, who is the director at the Com Tech site, that there would be no problem with switching there. Infrastructure, like I said, a lot of that is already there, and there is possibility for expansion there. You would be going down seven eleven, which is that two lane road, you can go in behind the Native Angels. There's a road that goes up to the ditch back there that could be fixed to go in behind the campus that's already there. Uh, I just think with the fact that it being a technology location to start with, that's what it is there, it's already established. And if we're looking at moving forward and trying to get shovels in the ground and doing something as quick as possible, that's the way I'd like to see us go. Now, we could do something tonight based on Dr. Williamson said they're doing ground boards and things like that, that, that anything we approved tonight or whatever had to be contingent upon all of that being found to be satisfactory. And if it wasn't, then this wouldn't pass, it wouldn't go through. Uh, but for me, uh, my opinion is that it should be put at our Com Tech location. Mr. Henry was up, and then Mr. Dwayne, I'll get you. And Mr. Terry, if you had yours, I'll get you too. Mr. Henry, did you have a question?
Um, Mr. Craig, uh, with what I'm hearing, um, what would be wrong if we had a joint meeting with the county commissioners? Or we, ever how we feel, go to their meeting and make a formal request or whatever to get some idea of what their board is thinking and working with us? Because I know they're, it's a joint, because they've already contributed, so they have monies invested too. Um, I think they would be willing to, like we heard, but it's, it, until we get it in writing, it's not a done deal.
Well, like I said, who I'm talking with right now, the deal is the directors at Com Tech. It's not the, not the county commissioners. Now, if we need to, I've been told they could have a vote. They were kind of waiting to see what we would do, but, uh, they could be, you know.
I think we're waiting on each other.
Yeah.
And we just need to go ahead and finalize something there.
Mr. Terry.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going to add to, it, it sounds like either way we go, we're going to have to have a conversation with the county commissioners. Because what I'm looking at here, I mean, what we own is, is, is essentially wooded. So we can vote on, on either of them, but it's still going to be contingent upon, you know, what happens, you know, with, with a different board. So, um, but I also wanted to add, I think there's, um, I think there's value, when I go look at the, when I go look at what's, what's currently at seventy four and ninety five, it's, um, there's, there's a lot of traffic, you know, obviously, but, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about making a decision based on something that's the word of, of a different, you know, a group of individuals that's saying such and such is coming. It's so much like if you build it, they will come, what if we build it, what if we build it and they, they don't show up? So if you look at Com Tech, I mean, if you look at that area, it's all, it's already hustling and bustling, it's a, you know, you got to think about, you know, whether or not we want to go to a location where there's, it just doesn't seem like there's a lot going on in terms of like different. If you think about the, the original mission and vision of Con, Com Tech, like Mr. Craig said, two, two of the three educational, um, institutions in the county has already appealed their, uh, their commitment. So I think it's time for us to uphold our, ours as well.
Dwayne?
Yeah, Ms. Mr. Craig, I've been on this board here for, um, for twelve years. And we've, we've had some conversation about this, this right here. And I told you how I kind of felt about it. Um, and I, I don't mean for this to sound smart, and I hope it doesn't sound smart, but do we need the county commissioners' help on this right here? As far as financially or maybe helping with this project or anything like that there?
Other than I can say the commitment that's been about with the needs based grant. Ms. Erica, you had your hand up, so you might can answer that better than I can.
I could be wrong, Mr. Smith, but I believe anytime we enter into a new school project, it does require your county's, um, authorization because of, uh, any debt that may have to come along with said project.
Okay, and that's, that's kind of like what my point is there. And, Mr. Craig, this is no disrespect. I'd rather have money on my side than what a board of directors have to say. If they, if you've got people that's dollars talk, and I think that's where we kind of need to have a little help to kind of be, have the same enlightenment as what the county commissioners are willing to try to, to try to help us with. And I, like I told Mr. Craig, I don't care if they put it in a cornfield somewhere, I'm ready to see a shovel in the dirt, that's just the bottom line.
I'm ready to.
But, you know, if we're going to be getting some help from them, y, you know, um, I don't want us to be at each other or anything. If, okay, well, if they're willing to give us more or whatever, I mean, it's got to be a conversation with them, if that makes sense. And I understand about a board, but it's okay about a board, but I'd rather have money coming to me than what a, what a board say so is. That's, I hope that don't sound harsh, that, that's not what it's meant to sound like, but money talks. And depends on what we're able to, what they're willing to do for us and help us with, that's, I, I don't care. I could, I don't care where it's, as long as it's Robinson County, put a shovel in the dirt, that's where I'm at. Because I know as well as I do and listen, let's just lay it out here. Guys, don't nobody put their head in the ground. You guys know this has been an east-west fight?
For years.
For years.
Yeah.
We got to get by it. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it's our county, put a shovel in the dirt somewhere. But if they'll give us more money to put it over there than they will to put it over there, then I want to be where the money's going and how much more that they can give to us. So like I said, it does not matter to me, I'll, I'm good with whatever body decides, so, um, that's where I'm at.
Ms. Ernie?
Ms. Chairman, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Ernie and Ms. Brenda, then I'll get you.
I was just thinking, uh, when she said heavy industrial, that scared me. Up in the, the northeast where these factories once were at, people having cancer and all kind of tumors and, uh, all kind of cleanups, the Cape Fear River on, up, up above, um, of us here, you know, what they're doing there due to industrial type accidents. So heavy industrial to me scares me as far as that, from the aspect of knowing that we have our superintendent, boys and girls, that, that they always have to be responsible for. So when it, however you make your decisions, I think you need to think in that realm. Uh, in that direction, not referring to the east and west thing, because I'm like you, it don't matter to me. But the key is, you've already seen development there, and that development is heading towards academia and the, the technology side of the educational world. So to me, that's more like a triangle park, research triangle park up at Com Tech now. That's, I think that was the vision that I'm kind of portraying there. But, um, like I said, that heavy industrial scares me, because if there were an accident and you got a school nearby, then you've got some situations that's going to have to be dealt with. So just think about those type things, it's just a thought to be thinking of.
Ms. Brenda?
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
And, and, and that's, and that's my concern, because when we rezoned it from residential agricultural, we rezoned, we zoned it to heavy I two, which is heavy industry, which does include chemicals or any type of other type businesses. But I wanted to think also concerning the children and how they, I don't want them to be gloomy going to an area where there's nothing at versus where they get excited where they're going. I like the money concept like Randy talked about, but also if we would have to purchase land, we would lose some of the money we got to build a center already. And I'm like, Dwayne, I'm like both of them really, I do want to sit down and have a conversation with them if we have to, but I also want us to go ahead and put the shovel in the dirt.
Mr. Terry.
Ms. Brenda, based on your experience with the, uh, with the zoning and planning, if there, if that area's been, if there's an area with a school within X number of miles, would that limit what sort of, uh, businesses that can come to, to an area? So for example, he was talking, you were talking about heavy, heavy industry. If there's a, a school with X number of miles, can various industries be prohibited from, uh, expanding i, uh, into that area?
Well, school would have to be put into that if it's going to be going out there. And highway commercial schools can go in highway commercial, but the, the biggest portion of that land will rezon to heavy industrial I two. Now, at the intersection of, uh, exit ten, uh, where ninety five, he's exit ten McDonald section, that portion only, unless they changed it since I've been gone, and they had not for you, before I had to bring him here, it was only zone highway commercial. Schools can go in highway commercial, so you got to look at the zoning aspect of it, and you also got to look at, uh, we don't need to lose no more money, you know? And we want our students to go somewhere that's going to make them exciting to be going. But that area is not a gloomy area at all. I'm sorry. That area is a gloomy area. It's not exciting. You know, even when I ride by the bus garage, it's not exciting. No offense, Mr. Amos. You face the tobacco, it's still on the lot. But like I said, it's, my concern is it's on heavy, is our highway industry, I too, heavy industry.
Mr. John?
I have to disagree with that. It's not a gloomy area. I lives out there.
It's still gloomy to me, yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John.
When they okay decided to go out there, it was heavy industrial. But before they could do that, they had to do a rezon through the city and the county, so they did change it. Um, all of it's not heavy industrial out there.
I'm speaking on the county side, not the city side.
Majority of it's inside the city.
I was the one who did the paperwork for the county on the county side. I did not do the city side. I only did the county side, which was on the right-hand side. You all went out there a half mile from it. And I don't know what, where they talk about looking at either.
Ms. Brenda? Ms. Brenda's got it.
Hang on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Samo.
Oh, let me talk.
I'm sorry, Mr. Samo.
My, my only thing is, is like I said, we need to sit down with the county commissioners. And I understand what Mr. Craig's saying about the board of directors, but the final say is gonna come from the county commissioners.
Yes, it is.
Whatever they say, and they ain't got to give a damn. They can just have to say so. So my thing is, is that we need to find out where they're at because there's eight county commissioners and
Yes.
what they're willing to do before we say yay, nay, or pinpoint something. And, and I understand this, Mr. Craig, but I just want to say, we own land at Comtech. But we don't own no cleared land at Comtech, because what's on this paper, we don't own. That's if a board of directors approves it and sends it to the county commissioners. So either way it goes, the county commissioners have got to approve it. And if they approve this and say it's fine, or if they approved the one on seven eleven, it's fine. Or if they want to be generous and give us some at seventy-four and ninety-five, we might take that too, but it gives you options. I'm just saying, on the two options we've got, we, we know we own the land on seven eleven at Deep Branch.
Yes.
What this site is sitting on here, we don't even own it yet. So that's a swap. And I, and I understand that, but we just, Dr. Williamson, let me ask you this. Can you get with Ms. Kelly Blue and see when the, when the school board and the county commissioners can sit down and talk?
Mr. Chair, I can do that. May I make a suggestion? Because we've had to do this conversation with additional property. My recommendation would be that we hold this conversation and we move to our RFQ, uh, and identify who we want our engineering and construction company to be, because I think they ought to be part of this conversation when we meet. For me, that would be the next step. And once we get that group in place, then we sit down with commissioners and have that conversation on all, all the sites and possibilities.
Do we need to have anything from the group at, uh, Comtech to start with before you meet with commissioners? Does that need to be done, or do they need to be brought into that conversation also? Since my understanding, that's who makes, my understanding is that's who makes the decision there. Now, they might not make the ultimate decision, but they have a say so in property that's on the Comtech property.
I think so. I mean, be part of the conversation, um, that we can be transparent, open, and everybody will have input. But again, just the nature of this conversation, I think is to our advantage to have some sense of our engineering company and construction company to factor in that experts on zoning and then move forth with that joint conversation. That would be my recommendation. Um, Bobby, you talked with Mr. Grady today. Where is he on writing that?
So I reached out to Mr. Grady, our attorney, to go ahead and, uh, start the process with the, uh, RFQ. And so he said that that would be something he would begin work on immediately and get that to us as soon as possible, so we can get that out for, out and get the proposals back in.
Okay. Mr. Randy, let me ask you, the land you talking about, you say intersection of seventy-four and ninety-five, where, where are you talking about?
Well, I mean, it's in that general vicinity. Two miles, this way, two miles, four miles. I mean, it, it's all, and it's not saying it's got to go there, but I know that there, there's stuff in that. From what I was told, some of the county commissioners met in Raleigh last night. So that's, I mean, that's all I know.
I was told they met in Raleigh last night too, Randy.
Ah, so we on the same, yeah.
That's all I know.
Yeah. It, it's like, it's like the baseball field. It had corn in it, but they said you build it and they'll come.
That, that's what'll happen if it's built at Comtech. Go ahead, go ahead.
Listen, Andrew Wayne's told you.
I know, I know what you told me.
But we don't even own the land there. We, we're talking about, you have the baby who's saying, I mean, I'm gonna go build a house, and I'm hoping Henry's gonna swap land with me. But if, if that land's got oil on it, you think Henry gonna swap? No.
Let me ask you a question, and, and we'll go on, and, uh, and I agree doing what Dr. Williamson said. But, but let's say that we do get that land, do we have any problem with going to that site? Let's say that land, that we get that land there at Comtech.
Approval from them.
Them, right.
And the county commissioners. Because the final, the final say is gonna come from the county commissioners. Because that land is the county. It's not Comtech. Comtech don't, Comtech don't own it. County commissioners own that land. Am I right?
That's correct. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we own some of the land.
Yeah.
We own some of the land.
He's speaking on the county side.
Yeah. We own about thirty-five acres.
Right.
I'm saying, Mike, it's not, you're aware, but on your paper, there is, move that.
Yeah.
You don't own none of that. That's the part you want to swap, the rule is clear.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's correct.
You got to swap, and the final say is gonna come from the county commissioners.
That's correct.
And this chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward and, uh, and, and go with Dr. Williamson's ideas, go ahead and reach out with the RFG.
RFQ.
RFQ and, and start from there.
Have a motion. Have a second?
I'll second it because it's a good discussion tonight.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good discussion.
And, uh, we'll try to get all three of these entities to you, Dr. Williamson, to set up a meeting. Okay?
Absolutely. And at the same time, we have graded to, uh, pull our policy in terms of site selection and bold and all that, to make sure that we have clarification and that the board would take action according to our policy. So we'll have that added to it, please.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. You hear nothing? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second man.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.